Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth and my colleagues on council. I call to order the public work session for Tuesday, October 26, 2021. And Madam Clerk, could you please? Call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucasberg.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Mr. Woodard.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Madam City Manager? You have the floor, ma'am.
Yes. First presentation. City Council has requested information regarding the departments on the fourth floor of City Hall, specifically planning, engineering, and technical services, and permits and inspections. Tonight, City Council will receive a detailed briefing on the responsibilities of those departments. In addition, the presentation will provide a generalized overview of the development review process steps leading from an undeveloped site to a newly constructed building with a certificate of occupancy. Deputy City Manager Bob Baldwin will start the presentation, and he will be followed by City Engineer James Wright, as well as the Building Official Doug Smith, respectively.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Baldwin, welcome, sir.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Glover, members of City Council. Certainly our pleasure to provide this briefing for you tonight. Hopefully it will be informative and maybe advise you some things you may not be aware of that go on, on the fourth floor in addition to the things you are aware of and see. Purpose of the briefing tonight, as you can see from the slide we're on here, really giving an overview of the functions and services that are provided by the departments on the fourth floor. Again, those three departments the City Manager mentioned. We'll go over our responsibilities regarding land use, a lot of the regulations regarding environmental protection. We'll discuss flood regulations, we'll discuss resilience, Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act requirements, stormwater management, some of the things with climate change, things that are on the horizon for us. We will also talk about what we call Development Services, is really our plan reviewing processes, leading people to get permits. We'll talk about our responsibilities for regulatory compliance, most of those being mandated down from the federal and state governments to the city. And then we'll talk about some of the things we do in terms of regional collaboration. So that'll be sort of the purpose of the briefing here. Next slide, please. So, starting off, just to give you, we're gonna try to break this down into three, three blocks. The processes we use don't really operate one at a time, they quite often are done in a fashion which things are overlapping, but basically for the purpose of trying to provide sort of a clear presentation this evening. We'll break it down into these three blocks you see on the slide before you. We'll talk about the planning and zoning piece. And for people involved in the development process, the development review process, that's generally where they're gonna start. And that gets into questions about, you know, what am I gonna do? You know, what do I want to do? Where's my property located? And those kind of questions trigger a lot of the regulatory requirements. They're usually location-based, and they're use-based. And so, depending on what the customer or the applicant's intentions are, where they're located will quite often determine what the regulatory requirements will be for them. We'll follow that up with the engineering piece, which is what I think most people would refer to as our site plan process, for people are building, doing new construction or significant new construction additions. They have to get through our site plan process, that's part of land disturbance, site preparation, that gets into parking and landscaping and all those stormwater functions we'll talk about. And then finally, we'll go through the last piece of it, really the permits and inspections piece. That's the building piece. That's where people get their building permits, get their building plans approved, they construct, they're inspected, all of those types of things. So, we will go through that part of the process. We'll just mention, too, when you get into some of these larger processes like the site plan process, this is just not a function of the fourth floor. This is a collaborative process across multiple city departments. For example, the Public Utilities Department is a major player in a lot of these site plan review processes, things of that nature. So, again, I'll just start off, I think just for simplicity's sake, the zoning piece, first piece, and that's where most people, when they come in the door, they want to sit down and talk to somebody either in zoning, or somebody at least knows zoning, when they come to the planning department. And so, next slide, please. Again, this is our, part of our development approval process, and we're gonna talk a little bit about zoning, talk about our zoning authority, what we do, how we do it, and the authorities we have. So go to the next slide, please. I always start off with this slide, a lot of people find it kind of dry, but it's really important for us. Talk about the city's local planning authority, and we're a Dillon Rule state, and I think most of the council members are aware of what that means, but for the public, when you're a Dillon Rule state, this is a doctrine that goes back to the late 1800s, it's about the relationship between state and local governments. And it basically states that localities only have the authority that has been expressly provided to it by the state, and if you have to interpret it, and it's not reasonable what you're asked for, you have to presume you do not have the authority. So it's a very constricted amount of authority. So it applies quite regularly when we're dealing with zoning issues, when people want you to like waive a requirement or modify a requirement, and unless the General Assembly has given zoning administrator authority to do things of that nature, we're simply not permitted to do that. So, that all comes under that Dillon Rule doctrine. And so, that was actually, as I understand it, has been in place in Virginia since the late 18, in the late 1800s. So it's a longstanding concept. I think a lot of people, including our City Manager, has worked in places where they have home rule. It's quite different, the amount of authority localities get in home rule states, but we are in Virginia, and we have a very restricted amount of authority, again, based on what the General Assembly has decided we're allowed to have. Next slide, please. I'm sure City Council's all aware, we'll start off again on our zoning piece, this is something you're all familiar with. You see these applications come before you. The zoning authority has also been incorporated into the state code, and what we call our enabling legislation, it dictates from the state how we go about doing zoning. And basically, this is where we establish zoning districts, we establish zoning regulations, where buildings can be, how big they can be, how tall they can be, all the other development requirements. That's all under the authority under zoning. That also applies all of those uses, and for those of you who've taken a look in our zoning ordinance, you see we've got a fairly lengthy use table. That's where that's all spelled out in the use table, whether it's not allowed, whether it's permitted by right use, whether there's a use permit requirement, things of that nature. So that's all under that use authority. And that's in 15.22280 of the state code, if you wanna look that up for some late night reading. But that's our authority to do zoning. The, next slide, please.
Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, sir.
Hold a minute, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir.
I just, I just have a question for council. Is this presentation based on a request from one of our council members?
Which presentation is that, sir?
This, this 42-page presentation.
That, that presentation, Madam City Manager, do you want to address that, please?
Yes, that was a request from Vice Mayor Barnes, where there were no objections from council, to bring this presentation to the council during this meeting.
Okay. Was it pertaining to the issues of the fourth floor? Or just an overview of all the planning?
It said, "fourth floor." Yes.
You may continue, sir.
All right, so again, the way that the zoning authority works, it's a combination of the regulations which are in text, that's our zoning ordinance that you're all familiar with, that's matched up with the zoning map, which City Council also adopts as it does the zoning ordinance. You match the two up, you determine what, where the property is, what its zoning district is, which shows on the zoning map, you match that up with the zoning regulations, and that's the basis across the country, really, of how zoning is done. It's pretty straightforward, it's the combination between the map and the text. And so that's the way that's done. Next slide, please. Now, we have a number of other city codes that are related to our zoning authority. We do flood protection, as you know, you're all familiar with our FEMA flood insurance program, our flood protection program, that's also in the city code, it's an overlay district in zoning. So you apply the flood regulations on top of the regular zoning, so there's a map basically showing the flood hazard areas. We manage that program in the planning department. Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, that's also a, an overlay district on the zoning, it has its own chapter of city code, that also operates as an overlay district in zoning. So, as you, if you go back to the previous, you look in there, depending on where your property is located, someone may find themselves both in a flood hazard area, they might also be in the Chesapeake Bay area, in addition to all the other zoning regulations. So that's where we start trying to figure out exactly all the regulations that might apply to a specific person, what they want to do, and where they're located. Next slide. You're also familiar, we have historic districts, these are designated by City Council, we have five. State code requires for us to apply historic district requirements, they must be designated and adopted by City Council, so these have been in place for a number of decades. That outlines the location, each one of those is a district, has their own set of regulations. These are the only districts, in addition to our downtown design district, in which we are allowed to regulate building materials, building design types. State code is pretty specific, in typical residential districts, you cannot be dictating what the building looks like. The state sets minimum standards, that's what the zoning is, unless you're in a historic district, or unless you're in a, that City Council adopted a local historic district. And that's where you have the authority to apply those historic district design requirements, and that's where you have your Historic Preservation Commission, City Council appoints, and your Downtown Design Committee, same thing. That operates under the same state code authority. And we just provide you another, another sort of a close-up of another zoning map, it's a little different zoning downtown, but you can see the different districts downtown. So some people say, "How come the zoning looks different from my property, somebody else's property?" Because zoning can change, obviously, depending on where you're located. So it's just an example of that. Next slide, please. Now I gotta quickly go through all the different things that happened in the planning department. This chart here kind of tries to summarize in a, in a way, all the different activities that happened in the planning department. The ones we're primarily talking about this evening are those, we'll start at the top, the zoning piece, which has to do with zoning permitting, people getting zoning for business licenses, zoning verifications, we have another request for letters, banks refinancing, people want zoning verification. We operate the Board of Zoning Peels through that function, and we coordinate with permits and inspections on zoning violations, and that's a joint activity between the two departments. City Council's very familiar with the current planning piece, it's in the gray box right there, a gray circle, where you see your use permits, rezonings, code amendments, street closures, street name changes, all of those require City Council approval. And then, of course, we have the, under that code compliance, we picked up those other overlay districts we mentioned earlier, the Chesapeake Bay. We also operate wetlands board, the flood regulations, subdividing of property, we do permitting for food trucks, and we do special permits, and we'll talk about some of those in a little, in a little bit. Also participate in site plan review. Site plan review process is handled through engineering, but it's authorized under the zoning ordinance, and so it's picked up over here. And then a number of things we do, we manage the city's home and community development block grant program. We have five boards and commissions that are staffed by the planning department. We do all the city's long-range plans, for example, the Conference of Plan, we do resilience planning, we staff the Complete Count Commission for the Census, and done joint land use study with the City of Chesapeake and the Navy, that's a process that's about to conclude. We have a very active transportation planning element in the planning department, where we do, we've just completed about a year or so ago, the bike and pedestrian plan, we have a, the city's master transportation plan, it's due for updating. We work with HRT on ferry improvements, bus shelters, and we're also involved in sort of ongoing discussions about using scooters and bike share and all of those things. We have not had any successful, go through the RFP process a couple of times, we've not had any, I won't actually go all the way through the process, but I think that's a COVID-related lack of activity at that point, but down the road, we're likely to see that. And then we also work through regional committees on transportation. Some of you are probably familiar with the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, they're the ones who funded the HRBT widening, the widening of 64 up through the peninsula. We operate, we're participating in these technical groups, the TTAC, that's the Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, the FTA, which is the Freight Transportation Advisory Committee, and HRT. So the planning department has a whole robust plate of things it does, and we go to the next slide. Very quickly, this is the staff, total of 15 people in the planning department. On the right, we just list some professional certifications. We're very fortunate, we've got three staff members that are certified as certified zoning administrators. We have one certified zoning officer, and then we have a number of folks who are like myself, AICP, which is the American Institute of Certified Planners, it's kind of the high level certification for planners. We have flood plan managers, we keep a note republic on staff, in case people have to get documents signed, so we try to be as well-trained and well-versed in all of our requirements as we can be. Next slide, please. And then we thought we'd run through some of our statistics, show kind of the activities of the planning department, and this slide, I think, is kind of interesting, we look at it for the three years in this sense. If you look at 2019, that's a pre-COVID year, City Hall was open, no restrictions of people coming in. You can see the number of permits and approvals that went through the department during 2019, and I'm just gonna point you down into the zoning permits, there were 1,095, and you see those 803 business license clearances, those are all zoning permits, so you had a little, almost a little over 1,900, near 1,900 there. Go to 2020, as you are well aware, City Hall closed in March, we had nine months where the planning department converted itself from paper to virtual. Everything that's done in the planning department can now be done virtually, with the exception of subdivision plats, will still have to be physically signed so they can be recorded in the courthouse. And I think if you take a look at the numbers, you'll see, you don't see a whole lot of difference in those numbers, in fact, see, the number of zoning permits went up, those are related to construction. Business license clearances went down, I think we all know the economy took a little bit of a dip during, during the primary part of COVID when everyone was closed, but the department stayed fully functional, we did not close one day during COVID. So when the city was functioning, the planning department was operating, even though we were virtual, people were teleworking, but we kept up our work. And one thing I'll just point out, the very bottom of the slide, special permits, and these are, people get permits for parades, public assemblies, outdoor dining permits, you can see there's quite a dip there in 2020, that's when the governor declared that public assemblies had to be shrunken down to small numbers, because we lost many of those. If you look over to 2021, this is just through the very, the beginning of October, the 2021 number, so it's a little over nine months. You can see we're already exceeding the pace of what we had in previous years, and you can see the special permit activity has picked back up again, as people are being allowed again to congregate and kind of get back together. So, things are pretty clear evidence of the amount of activity that goes in the department, number of permits and approvals that go through there every year, certainly busy every day. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, sir.
I have to step away for a minute, you continue your presentation.
Okay, certainly. So that's the planning side, so just to go back to the development review process I indicated, a lot of times when it will start off, someone will come in, they want to have a certain kind of a business, or they want to build a certain type of thing. For those that are novices at it, or not regular customers, they'll typically call in, we'll have some conversation with them, try to get some information about what it is they're trying to do. Once we work through the requirements under zoning, determine what they want to do, what they're allowed to do for new construction, they will then move from the zoning process into the site plan process, and they start to develop their plans for construction for that. So with that, I'm gonna step away, let Mr. Wright come in, he's gonna walk through the site plan process, is really one of the major components of our development review program. So Mr. Wright is gonna give that part of the process, part of the process here.
If it's okay with council, I think we can kind of skip this presentation and go to the questions. Does anybody have any specific questions?
I want to hear it.
You want to hear it? Okay.
Okay, good evening, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. So, the Department of Engineering and Technical Services coordinates a technical review for site plans. After site plan approval, we issue a number of permits and receive bonds as required, and conduct the necessary inspections related to those permits. Next slide. So this is the number of activities that take place in the Department of Engineering and Technical Services. Technical Services include the role that we play in the development process, we provide technical assistance to other departments, and we maintain the city construction standards. Development Services includes site plan review and subdivision review. We play a regulatory role that extends to the right-of-way, stormwater compliance, Chesapeake Bay preservation areas, and traffic control plans. The environmental programs that we administer are subject to state and federal audit. We routinely issue permits for various construction-related activities and hold bonds as required for those activities. A significant portion of our time is dedicated to project management, from engineering studies, to project scoping, to planning, to design, to construction, inspection, and closeout. The city has a stormwater permit, which is issued by DEQ and enforced by EPA. The Stormwater Compliance Division sits within this department, and we're responsible for ensuring that all permit-related activities are conducted in accordance with the permit, and that they are properly documented for our annual report. We participate in numerous regional committees at the Planning District Commission, in order to stay abreast of issues that may impact the city, as they, as they relate to impacts as far as roadways, environmental concerns, and we also are there to take advantage of any funding opportunities that may become available. With respect to our transportation program, we're responsible for the city's local assistance program, where the majority of our transportation projects are coordinated and funded through VDOT. Next slide, please. This slide just shows the technical staff in the department, and the various professional licenses and certifications that they hold. Please note that DEQ mandates the various state-issued certifications for the individuals in the Stormwater Compliance Division. Next slide, please. So, site plan review. Site plan review is intended to promote the orderly development, evaluate and mitigate significant environmental impacts, promote public safety, and general welfare by ensuring that development projects are properly related to their sites, surrounding properties, traffic circulation, water and sewers, drainage, and other infrastructure. The vast majority of site plans fall into two categories, the major site plan and single-family site plans. Minor site plans are typically those projects that don't require all the full components of a full-blown major site plan submittal. Site plan review coordinate process, as Mr. Baldwin mentioned, is coordinated through our department. Site plans are submitted to our department and then routed to the various departments that are involved in the site plan review. We get those comments back, coordinate them and put them in a letter, and get those letters out, those review letters out to the applicant's engineer, and also to the owner who's listed actually on the site plan, and subsequent reviews are handled in the same manner. Next slide. So, site plan consists of multiple required components. Each one of those plan components you see listed on the left has its own subcomponents and own set of requirements, and generally speaking, the required site plan components are associated with those city code sections you see there on the right. The environmental ordinances, the first four you see there, Chesapeake Bay Overlay District, Erosion and Sediment Control, Flood Protection, and Stormwater Management, are all model state ordinances, so they're exactly the same ordinance that there are in this state, and those ordinance are based in federal regulations. Our site plan requirements are listed on the city website. Next slide, please. So, layered into the site plan components and reference ordinance are the various regulatory standards that are associated with the various program activities that require checks for compliance during that review. These programs and regulations have oversight by agencies such as the Department of Environmental Quality and the Virginia Department of Health. You see a few of those there, the Stormwater Management Program, BNP Clearinghouse, sewage collection and treatment regs, and water rest regulation. Other standards are set forth by Federal Highway Administration, American Disabilities Act, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Criteria, and they're intended to promote safe, consistent roadway infrastructure. Another important thing to note on this slide is that site plans need to be signed and sealed by a professional engineer or licensed 3B survey, survey license to practice in the state of Virginia. Next slide, please. So people often ask, what are the requirements for time review as it pertains to site plans? And so this is directly from the state code. So, the first step is determine the completeness within 15 calendar days received of the site plan. If it's determined to be incomplete, then the applicant shall be notified in writing indicating the reasons that the plan is deemed incomplete. If determined complete, then an additional 60 days from the date that the communication is made with the applicant, that the plan is determined complete, is allowed for the plan review. If a determination is not made, then the plan will be deemed complete as of the date of submission, and a total of 60 days from the date of submission will be allowed for the plan review. The plan approving authority shall review within 45 calendar days of the date of resubmission of any plan that has been previously disapproved. And these guidelines are consistent throughout several articles of regulation, this is the primary state code, but it's also found in stormwater regs and a couple of other regulations throughout the state code. Next slide, please. So, from January 2014 through September 2020, 2021, there have been 209 site plans submitted for review. 173 of those have been approved, 20 site plans are still active, and a site plan review. When applicants come in and ask about site plan process, and how long will it take for me to get a response, we typically tell them it'll take about four to six, six weeks. Mind you, if you go back to the last slide, it's either 15 days to determine that it's complete, then additional 60, so it's 75 days if it's determined complete. If it's not determined complete and no communication is made, that's another, that's 60 days, so it's either 60 days or 75 days. We tell applicants four to six weeks. Now, the initial, after that initial letter is received from the applicant, the developer and their team is responsible for the schedule, so once they get that letter from our department, the schedule's in their hands about how long it takes them to get their responses corrected, get the plan adjusted, and get the plan back into the department. We don't have any control over that, other than making ourselves available for the applicant and their engineer, as they call it, contact us with questions. Site plan submittal varies by project, and each subsequent response is based on the completeness and thoroughness of the revised plan set. The number of submittals is largely dependent on the complexity of the project. Comments made on a site plan submission may require plan changes that affect multiple regulations or departments. And just a couple of examples, if there's a comment on a landscape buffer that impacts a parking lot, that's likely gonna impact the drainage design and stormwater management requirements, and so you have multiple plan components that could be impacted that require additional reviews when they resubmit that plan back in for review. The proximity of proposed pipelines to building foundations may require shifting of features on-site, which may bring in an additional component of plan review. If a plan needs coordination with another agency such as VDOT or the Corps of Engineers, that extends the timeline and also introduces some complexities into the project. As you see here, the average time for the city to respond for site plans is right around 20, 23 or so odd days. 25 for the first submittal, 22 for the second submittal, 23 for the third, 19 for the fourth, and 14 for the fifth. And once again, those complexities and timelines are based on those reviews that come back to us. Next slide, please. So, as requested, here's how we stack up to the rest of localities in the region. Skip one, sorry. So, yeah. So with this slide, approximately 80% of the plans are approved and three submittals. It is not impossible to get a plan approved in the first submittal during that timeframe, 40 plans have been approved on the first submittal. Next slide, please. Okay, here we go. So this is how we stack up to our neighbors. We're about in the middle, somewhere near the top, see Chesapeake at 21, which is the low, Suffolk at 30, which is the highest, and we're at 26 days, and this is the compiled review times from initial to subsequent recent metals. Next slide, please. So, this slide shows some data from our single-family residential site plan approval process. In 2017, the department heads on the fourth floor started to have discussions about how we could improve our process. There were difficulties with applicants coming up and experiencing, for lack of a better word, headaches getting through that process. So, at that time, applicants basically had to come in with their packet, go from department to department, take several trips back and forth to City Hall, it was tedious and worrying on applicants and developers, and worrying on staff, and so we got together, got our heads together to talk about what we could do to make the streamline the process and make it a little bit more efficient. We took a year, the department heads, the team that reviews those plans, we revamped our application process, we revamped the process, put things in place to make the process more efficient. We took a six-month time period with a local home builder to test the process, so we could tweak it and work it before going live, and in 2019, we went live. The stated goal to basically turn around single-family projects within five days. Now what happens is an applicant submits Now, what happens is an applicant submits their package to zoning department to get their zoning clearance. Once that clearance is received, that packet is transmitted to the engineering department for a start of that single-family process, which is a combined process where the building department is looking at the things they need to look at, engineering department is looking at things we need to look at. It's a coordinated review. The applicant either can come in and drop their packet off or submit electronically, but unless there's an issue with the package that they submit, the only time that they're contacted or have to come into the building is to basically get their permits once everything's approved. Two things to note here, if you look at the number of applications returned 2021, we've worked our way through the process so that the process is clear. We're not having to return applications to the applicants. And if you go down to the column, average days for approval with outliers, four days, which means we're meeting our targets. So, this is just one process of how we work together as a team on the fourth floor to try to help developers. Next slide, please. So, some of the challenges during site plan review. In 2013, the Virginia Stormwater Management Program and all its components were transferred from the Department of Conservation and Recreation to the Department of Environmental Quality. This move indicated a shift from local assistance to more of an oversight regulatory standpoint from the state. All localities in the Commonwealth holding stormwater permits were mandated in 2014 to adopt the Virginia Stormwater Management Program. This new program comes with more robust and very specific design standards for drainage, flood protection, channel protection and BMPs that are intended to protect the environment. While there was a stated goal of these regulations in 2011 to enter, to fully integrate these components, stormwater management, Chesapeake Bay preservation areas, erosion sediment control and flood protection, to this date, they have yet to be fully integrated. Despite multiple bills to the General Assembly to do so, despite state funding set aside to provide consultant assistance to DEQ, basically that was spawned or came out of the legislative package that we sent a few years back, it still has not moved forward. And these non-integrated ordinance is called issues at a staff level and also for developers because there are a number of criteria that overlap and conflict. And if they were fully integrated, it would be a seamless, more streamlined approach to be able to communicate those regulations and requirements to development community. Another thing to take note there is that back in 2014, which is why it causes such heartache for developers, when these programs were mandated by the state, the cost in 2014 alone, construction costs were stated to increase by 40%. So, you multiply that out to current year and you're talking about a tremendous cost for stormwater management for projects. Case in point, some of the larger transportation projects have had to come back and do tremendous retrofits because they did not consider stormwater management. You take, I think, the second phase of widening of '64, they had to come back and do some significant stormwater management for whatever reason. It seemed to have been left out initially at a tremendous cost to come back and do that. Locality program staff required to have various certifications and mandated by the state in order to promote consistency in the interpretation of application for those regulations. Outside of that program staff, there's no requirement for any certifications or any training for the stormwater management program. And it is a new program, even though it's been in place since 2014. Stormwater is not stormwater the way it used to be back in the early 2000s, back in the 90s, back in the 80s. So, if you're not up to speed getting through stormwater management, it's going to be a challenge. As far as Chesbay, land disturbance in areas, for areas in the CBP areas is cumulative, not to be segmented. That basically means is you, we have a threshold, 2,500 square feet. You can't go 2,499, 2,499, 2,499 and come in and think you're going to get around the regulations. It's a cumulative impact. So, all those small projects, they add up over 2,500, then you're into the site plan process and you're into all those regulations. Small land disturbances within buffer zones shall be mitigated as mandated by the state. Individual landwork pilings for piers are counted as land disturbance. So, if you have that small footprint of a pier going in on your property, you have to mitigate for that because of the buffer area that you're in. And with the finding in one of the audits that we received, I think within the past two years, and so we've added that requirement to our review to ensure that people are following If your buffer areas and wetlands are, if you're unsure of where they are on your property and it's not mapped out, you have to actually get a certified delineation. And those delineations are good for five years. If you don't have a delineation, you have to go out and find someone to get that delineation. Has to be verified by the Corps of Engineers. If your delineation is over five years old, you have to go get a new one. And sometimes that causes hangups. But you see here, the planning department has done a couple of recent updates here, modifications to some areas where they updated their zoning ordinance. And the Department of Utilities is currently still looking over their water connection policy. Just briefly go over, it is a complicated process and we do our best to try to work with applicants, provide those materials to help get them through the process. And I'll turn it over to the building official.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Mayor, excuse me, mayor, vice mayor, members of council, my name is Doug Smith and I am your building and code official. So, I will be giving the presentation tonight on permits and inspections and the overview of what we do. Slide, please. The Building Division of Permits and Inspections is really in charge of the building inspection component and the permit issuing component. So, what we do is we vet permit applications, perform plans examination, issue permits, perform construction inspections and issue certificates of occupancy. Slide. The Uniform Statewide Building Code is a state statute provided by, in the Code of Virginia. It supersedes all local building regulations and codes affected by political subdivisions. It prohibits local amendments to the building code and it prohibits waiver of building regulations and code provisions. Slide. The purpose of the code is to protect the health, safety and welfare of the communities and citizens and the general public in the constructed environments, to provide minimum recognized construction standards and to allow the structures to be built at the least possible cost. Slide. The Uniform Statewide Building Code is comprised of three parts. It's 10 codes, it's five of Virginia Building and Fire Code-related regulations and over 1,000 reference standards. Slide. Part one of the Uniform Statewide Building Code is comprised of the Virginia Construction Code and the Virginia Residential Code. These codes are what are used for newly constructed buildings. The Virginia Existing Building Code is the code that is used by default on any alterations, modifications and so forth to an existing building. And the Virginia Maintenance Code is the code under which we enforce code enforcement measures throughout the city, whether it be dilapidated structures and so forth. We use the Property Maintenance Code as the enforcement measure. The various codes that we enforce, you can see that's quite, it's quite an extensive library. Slide. And it includes the mechanical plumbing, fuel, gas and the energy conservation codes, the fire prevention code, the property maintenance code, the existing building code and the residential and Virginia construction codes, as well as the electric code. The local building department is mandated by state statute that each local jurisdiction has to have a building department. It also mandates that each building department is permanently, has a permanently appointed building official as the executive in charge of the department. And it allows each building official to delegate authority to technical assistants, which is basically what you would know as the inspectors or permit technicians. The power and duty of the building department and the building official, we have the sole statutory and regulatory administrative and enforcement authority. We administrate and enforce the USBC consistently and equitably. We interpret and apply the USBC consistently and equitably. And something that's not on this slide, it is imperative that we enforce the code in accordance with the interpretation of the Virginia State Technical Review Board. We establish processes and procedures to administrate the codes and we delegate authority accordingly to our technical assistants, which have to be properly credentialed. As I alluded to earlier, we have permit, our responsibility includes permit application and processing and so doing its permit administration, plans examination, construction inspection and issuance of certificates of occupancy. The building official and all the technical assistants have copious numbers of credentials, certifications and so forth provided both internationally, nationally and by the state. Most of us have several different certifications as well, and many of these that are shown by these positions incorporate a large number of individual certifications. Slide. We were requested to provide turnaround times for our neighboring localities as well as the city of Portsmouth. As you can see here, the city of Portsmouth today, our turnaround time for commercial plans and residential plans is about 10 business days. That equates to about two weeks. And when we get a second submittal, we usually get those turned out within five business days. As you can see, several of our neighboring localities, that timeline is extended out for pretty good ways. We are very fortunate right now that we have been working diligently over the last year to reduce what, and I don't like to admit this, but we were out there about 10 weeks a year ago. And we've reduced that time down to two weeks. We all have the same problems and that's staffing. Finding and hiring plans examiners is an extraordinarily difficult thing. Many of our neighboring localities simply don't have that staff right now. Slide. Some of the larger projects that we've been working on over the last year, we have the Cherslin Commons condos, Holly Point's apartments, the Lineage Cold Storage Facility out in West Norfolk, Ocean Storage, Crofton Warehouse and various sports bars, we have a number of those, and the Wawa, which I'm sure you're familiar with. We have performed approximately 1,200 plan reviews in '21. And so far, this fiscal year in this first quarter, we've performed about 600. Slide. Okay. This shows that over the last year, we generally, we issue approximately between 4,000 and 5,000 permits a year. That's been pretty consistent. So far this year, we've got about a little over, I believe that's 1,200 permits that we've issued so far this year. Slide. And then our inspections by trade, we generally perform somewhere between 9,000 and 10,000 inspections a year. And so far, we've performed about 2,800 inspections. Let me see, let me confirm that. I can't read that as well as I wish I could. Yes, about 2,400 inspections so far this year. Slide. Okay. And now, I'll turn this back over to Bob. Would anybody like to ask a question?
Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Smith. On the inspections, do we do all of those in-house?
Yes, we do. There was a time when we contracted out inspections, but we perform all of those now.
Okay, so we don't outsource any of our inspections?
None of our inspections. I will tell you that we were, in trying to get over the problem that we were having with plans review and getting our projects turned over, not only were we fortunate enough to hire additional staff as plans examiners and we're getting them trained up now, we've cut down tremendously on that turnaround time. But the other thing that we did was to contract with a third-party plans examination company. And they've been very helpful on some pretty big projects, including the casino. So...
So, you think we're well situated to take care of the workload that's going to result from the casino?
Oh, yes. Yes, I've already taken the steps to make sure that that's going to be handled. We have the third submittal of the casino documents, I believe is the 12th of November. And I am going to be farming out the inspections for the casino as well. So, there will be a third party conducting those inspections. I met with them last week.
So, their inspections will be outsourced?
Yes.
Okay. Why is that?
Well, quite frankly, I didn't want to have anything that would interfere with that project, slow it down in any way. And the other component is many of our inspectors only have a couple of years of experience. And while I'm getting them trained up, I wanted to bring in people that were very experienced in large projects and complicated projects like that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Is there anything else?
Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. This is dealing with our water system.
I'm sorry, sir?
This is dealing with our water system. Do we have the staff persons certified to tell us whether we have problems with our water system?
Not with my department, sir.
Well, we have questions.
Okay, yes, sir. Your team, right? Right.
Sir, so you're speaking of public utilities, so the water is sampled daily in the water system and those test results are kept at the...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Maybe he didn't understand the question. I'm not talking about the water testing. I understand that principle. May I state the question to him again?
By all means, sir.
Thank you. Again, do we have the staff persons who are certified to let us know when we have problems with our water system? And yes, are they certified to inspect and oversee these repairs?
Yes, you currently have the interim director, who's a licensed engineer. You have the operations manager, who's a who's another licensed engineer. You have inspection staff. You have operations in both for the water distribution system. You have operations for sewage collection. You have operations for pump stations. And then you have a whole suite of certified individuals at the treatment plant.
Can they oversee and troubleshoot problems and oversee the corrections of the problems? And can they prepronounce through site and equipment performance when we're going to have a problem?
That's yes and no. And so it depends on what exactly you're talking about. So you have an older system. Come come winter time, you have freezing thaw cycles. So you don't know when you'll have a main break. You have older systems. You don't know when necessarily they're going to collapse as far as having a sewer cave in and such. You do have equipment such as such as monitoring equipment inside pump stations that can tell you how pump stations are operating based on their experience with the system. They can have some idea to be able to predict when certain systems are going to need to be replaced or in repaired based on repair repair records, repair logs, system complaints, and things of that nature. So that is why I said yes and no. So so some of it's variable, some of it's not.
But those things that are variable usually are things that can be handled promptly in most cases.
Yeah, so in in most cases, what you typically have is you have them come out and do whatever repair, whatever tasks they need to do to get the system up and operational so that there's no downtime or 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 significant downtime experienced by the customer.
So theoretically, our staff could do an overview and give us a description or a interpretation of how much we're talking about to put our system in a better position than it's in now.
Mr. Battle, this particular, we certainly appreciate your question. But this this particular.
While you are disturbing me.
I'm not disturbing you. Sir, sir, sir.
Mr. Mayor, that is total, totally disrespectful.
Sir, sir, what I'm trying to do is explain something to you. And if you would allow me to explain it, then then we will continue.
Person.
No, sir, I didn't say that. But what I'm trying to explain to you is what the process is. This this, sir, if you would allow me.
Process.
Well, 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 see, see, that's that's okay. But what I'm going to explain to you what the presentation is that we have today. If you would allow me just one second here. I'm not disagreeing with you, sir. I'm trying to clarify something.
Get to some questions about our system to help put us in a better place and not necessarily spend as much money, possibly save money, possibly make things better for the citizens. That's all my questions are, and they are in the line of that. So.
Sir, I'm not dis I'm not I'm not disagreeing with your questions as it relates to our water system. What I'm trying to convey to you in the most appropriate way is this this presentation that we're having right now. And the line of questioning really needs to deal with land use and the development process. That's what they're up here for. So I understand.
But that's not true. They are a three-pronged situation. He's dealing with storm, water management, and our water system. He's dealing with the building situation. They were putting a triplex of the services that they provide together. And I wasn't asking the building. I have no problems or or no things that I don't understand about the building situation. I'm just trying to get a better knowledge of this water situation and probably will then make things better for the city. And, Mr. Mayor, you should know you don't have to explain this to me. I've I've gone over this several times in my lifetime.
Thank you, sir. And and I believe you have.
And may I?
You 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 we're going to have one more question because we need to move on.
No, Mr. Mayor, I understand. I won't ask him any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How you doing there, Mr. Doug? Great presentation, great explanation. I just got a question. Is one licensed surveyor enough for our city?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Let me get Mr. Wright here.
Yes, sir, at this time, the one licensed surveyor is enough. That individual, though, is near the end of his career, which is why, if you saw that slide, we're we're looking to have an assistant city surveyor come in so we can bridge that gap at the at the time he does decide to move on. But right now, we're in good shape.
Okay. And well, back to Mr. Doug Smith. These are awesome numbers. I think council appreciate what you have going on with the turnaround of permits and applications. But to to the point of Councilman Moody, with our large projects coming up like our casino and and some of the projects that you've done in the past, would this put a burden on any of our small businesses that'll be trying to go through our application process? Because there has been feedback on delays and them trying to open up small businesses and whatnot. So I don't want to make sure that's a burden to them. So are we fully staffed and ready to service our small businesses?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, one of the one of the components of the small business, small businesses coming into effect here in the city is a our commercial reinspection program. And again, as much as I too much to my chagrin, this was the turnaround time for those commercial reinspections was way out there. It was probably as long as eight weeks at one time. Right now, we're down to about eight days. So and I I think that, to your point, the the work being done on the casino and so forth will not have any impact whatsoever on on the the small business component. But the commercial reinspection, there's only one thing. The other was plans review for projects where there might be a change of use and something of that nature that required permits to be issued and plans to be reviewed. We've taken care of that as well. And that's part of that timeline dropping dramatically. So I'm I have to tell you, I'm very proud of that. We had some real challenges we had to overcome. But we're there. And and I can tell you that we couldn't have gotten there without Manager Jones because she she came and and recognized that we had a serious problem there. We've had many discussions on it. And we hired the staff that we were able to do. And we're developing staff from within. We weren't able to go out and and bring people in. But we're developing staff from within to fulfill the need. So.
And this is from Mr. Wright. I know he was talking about a streamlined process that was, I guess, beta tested out with the contract in 2019. Was there any input from the public or, you know, any other contractors or business owners that was while you guys were forming it formulating that actual new system?
So prior to testing with that 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 home builder that I mentioned, as we were getting getting close to the point where we wanted to do a test, we reached out to all the the surveyors who normally submit single-family site plans, invited them to a meeting after hours so we could get their input on the process, what their thoughts were, where they thought, what they thought about, where we were going with the process. Those that could not attend, we asked them to provide email communication to us so that we could include all those things as we were moving forward in the process. Once we got that information, went back to staff and so to speak, put a bow on it. That's when we did the test with the with the home builder. But not specifically out to the public because typically those aren't the people that are submitting through that process. It's those individuals that we that we reached out to that normally make those submissions, and that's why we went that route.
Right, right. I got you. I just want to make sure, you know, that we continue to listen to, you know, the people who are submitting these applications, who are a part of this process. Because I mean, you know, things are ever evolving. So, you know, I I think you guys need to stay on your toes. We want to make sure we stay on our toes as well, listen to the the people who are trying to make sure they do a business with our our city. And we want to, you know, stay ahead of the learning curve. So I thank you guys. I just want to give you that advice because, you know, I do get a lot of phone calls and and, you know, you are the professionals whatnot. And we want to make sure that we are servicing and keeping up with neighboring cities so, you know, we can, you know, keep our reputation up to par. So I do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. There's a lot of good information in the packet that we want to keep close by in case we have to refer back to that. I guess during the pandemic, it would have been a great time for some of these beta testing or some of the streamlining of the processes to consider a digital process or an online process. I'm not sure if any of the departments have an online aspect to any of the processes that are in place right now for citizens to be able to utilize that when they can't come into City Hall for options like that. If you can update with that. And then I have one more question relative to Chesapeake Bay.
Yeah, I don't want to steal the thunder from a few of the upcoming slides. But yeah, we no one on the fourth floor shut down. So during the pandemic, so we found creative ways to have people drop things off. We have a Dropbox outside of City Hall. We were worked with, I think it's the Commissioner of Revenue to allow us to use his Dropbox. And then we do do a number of things electronically that we didn't do in the past. And so those options are available to applicants, whether they are seeking information or can't make it to City Hall or whatever the case be, or need to make a submission. So those options are available.
Great. And then with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area overlay in the district, I know that it was mentioned in under engineering. It was also mentioned under planning. Were any of those complications or problems caused for some delays because it may not have been user-friendly or somebody might not have understood? I know that during one of our planning meetings, there was a citizen who was trying to build a deck or something, and it had to be taken up. So is it user-friendly? Do people who are living in Chesapeake Bay Preservation Areas understand what and what they cannot do that would cause their permits or applications to be denied or delayed?
Probably not. I would say that the majority of people who live in a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, unless you're looking at a map, you just know you live on the water. You've been there forever. Those regulations are relatively new. You're talking late 80s. So if you've been in the home all your life, 70s, 60s, you've just done whatever you do on the water and with no thought of whether you need to to contact the city for for whatever.
That's what I was saying.
Likely what normally happens is your neighbor reports you. And then that's when the city gets involved and tries to basically walk you through the process retroactively. The reason why that is mentioned in both planning and engineering. So the use and the and the land use component is handled through the planning department. The technical review, what's the calculations and those things as far as they impact the environment are handled through the engineering department. And then as if a permit is needed as far as land disturbance, that that those inspections and permits, that's through the engineering department.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. To go with Chris's point earlier about involving the stakeholders, do we have any forums where we're discussing with the the applicants or just the people in general about what they need to do to get a business license? What is needed in a permit? Do we have any things of anything like that?
Yes, yes, sir, Vice Mayor. So on each of our websites, on the planning website, there's there's applications. Goes through a slide that you haven't seen yet. But there are applications with links to various city code references. There there are things in place to do pre-application meetings. There are requirements and checklists and guides for site plan review process, for erosion sediment control plans, for Chesbey process. And so there are a number of guide guidance-type materials available for applicants on the websites. And there are a number of different groups and individuals that are available that are available to meet with applicants, to discuss their project, and to help them work through the process.
So so for me, I get we have it on the on the website. But, you know, a lot of people just don't necessarily know to go to those websites. So for me, I would like to see us maybe do like a monthly forum where we where we invite people in monthly to kind of talk about these topics and what they need to do to get it done as far as instead of just doing it to the website. Because a lot of times, we we got to go to the people and and let them and give them that information and kind of coach them up or train them up to get this info. Also, as far as inspections, permits, one of the things, and I'm sure we all hear about it, is when we out, we hear about the the issues of when it comes to the inconsistencies in inspections about how one, when a when a inspector come in is one criteria for this, and then another one comes as another criteria. Or how when they come in and tell you they need you need to fix something, but then they say that's it. And then they come back the next time and say, when you fix this, oh, there's something else that needs to be fixed. Are we doing a better job with fixing those issues? Are inspectors trained to actually know what needs to be done, particularly when they go to a certain place or a certain business or whatever the case may be?
Well, I'm not sure which type of inspection that you're referring to. There are a number of different kinds of inspections. So I can only speak to the inspections that come through my department. Those individuals are trained. They are, if you're talking stormwater, they hold various certifications. If you're talking right-of-way, they hold various certifications. And they're all trained and aware of our guidelines, policies, and procedures for inspections and and what to look for. If you're specifically talking construction sites in the in the right-of-way, the inspector goes out and indicates what the developer, builder, what have you, needs to correct. He's not on-site daily, and he has no control of the site. So if something else happens and breaks or or gets out of whack while he's not there, it's incumbent upon him when he goes back to note that and require that to be corrected when he goes back.
So from what I'm hearing from the business owners, it was a daycare, it was also a car place, restaurant, and it's basically all the same thing. It's, for instance, one one place they it was something in the bathrooms in particular, and they had the toilet fixed already and finished. But when they came back and they fixed that particular issue, when they came back, they said the the handle on the toilet was on the wrong side of the toilet. But it was like that when they came in the first time, and nobody notified them. And and what this does is creates issues financially. When we continue to with our business, we continue to tell them stuff piecemeal, and not everything as a whole. It makes them lose money. And at the end of the day, makes them sometimes don't open up. So what we want to do is make sure that we are telling these people this from the beginning so that we can really show that we are a small business city and that we are welcoming them. Because a lot of people just don't feel welcome to the process because of the way things are going.
I agree with you. And in these, in some of these instances, as I said earlier, some of our staff are relatively new. And I like to say they're they're not in their infancy in code enforcement, but they are relatively new to it. And the training regimen is detailed. It takes a while. They need to, and we need to continue to do a better job with that and continue the rigorous training that they're getting. But in those cases where there's a. But in those cases where there's an inconsistency or something, both the Assistant Building Official and I are ready and willing to have a discussion with any of the business owners to see if we can rectify any of those issues, and if there's something that is a relatively minor issue or it can be grandfathered for some reason, we do that. So we do try to, to work with the business owner.
So, so what can we do to, to make sure that, even though we do have new inspectors, because, again, time is money when it comes to businesses?
Mm-hmm.
What can we do to make sure that when they're going to these businesses, they are finding those issues and not having to continue to go back and cost the business owner so much money?
Well, the primary thing to do is a good thorough plans review, and unfortunately, in our commercial reinspection program, the requirement to have a good, clean plan to review has been compromised because of a combination of things. Either we're trying to work with the business owner and will allow them to submit something that is far less than what we need, or, and then, and in that case, we can't do the detailed type of plan review that we need. So what we're trying to do is, is improve upon that, because if we can point it out while it's on paper and pencil, it can certainly be, it, it's certainly easier than when it sticks and breaks. I mean, that's just the fact, and what, that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just have a, just want to follow up on Mr. Barnes's question. Is there an inspection document that inspectors use in general?
Like a checklist?
Right.
No, sir.
Okay, so when they come to inspect, so is, is in their heads already what it is they're looking for?
Yes, sir.
So they have to memorize the inspection book?
Well, that's, that, that is what we're asking for them to do, yes.
Well, then, if we're in the business of customer service, how then will our citizens know what? Because there are some things that will fail, there are some things that are commented on.
Yes.
That you could still pass.
Mm-hmm.
How would the average citizen know what's in the inspector's head, the rags? It would seem to me that there should be some type of form that is given in advance that these persons can know that this is what's going to be expected. And I know we could say, well, it's in the regulations, it's in the policy, but I think customer service-wise, we need to make something like that available. It's not a surprise inspection, it's, we, we want, we want the persons to pass.
Absolutely, yes, we do.
And so it shouldn't be closed book, it should be open, and so.
And I think we can do that, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And, and that's something we can improve upon.
How, how will you, how will you get back with us on that process of that being done?
I think I can.
Madam City Manager, do you want to address that?
Yes, I will definitely be getting back to City Council regarding those processes. That, one, the checklist that you're referring to is one of many processes that we hope to implement to ensure that we're giving information to our citizens that are trying to do business with us, as well as identify some of the issues that have created perception. So we will be developing the checklist. The forum idea is a great idea, so as we develop these, we will make sure that we keep the council informed of those.
Yeah, so any, is, is, because Mr. Smith didn't know about what checklist was in the process of being, okay, so.
No, I said, that's a great idea.
Okay, so.
We had talked about that specifically.
Okay, all right. The, the other question I just have, because I thought some of the presentation was going to focus more on the issues that we have heard.
Yeah.
Coming from constituents about fourth floor, and I know it's not scientific, it's anecdotal, people come up to you, they say how difficult of a process it is going through permitting and the costs. My question is, what has specifically been done? Because you, you mentioned that the manager has put some things in place. What, what has specifically been done to address the issues? I thought I heard you mention earlier that you still have a staffing issue, examiners, I, I heard you mention that. What, what has specifically been done to address logistically? Do we just go to one floor and get your permits? Do they have to go to different offices? Is it a one-stop shop? What, what's being done in that regard?
Well, the entire, the entire permit process is what we've been trying to highlight here. There is the planning and the zoning component.
Well, you, you've, you've been highlighting what the departments are made of. I'm talking the logistics of it. The average person comes in to get a permit. Where do they go? Do they have to go to two locations, one locations? One location, do we have enough staffing? Because if not, that becomes a budget issue that we need to address. And so that's what I'm concerned, the, the general overview and that information here, that may be good, but it doesn't address the concern, and, and that is the issue of what's going on, on the fourth floor customer service-wise with getting permits in a timely manner and without having these additional costs. So, so what has specifically been done?
Well, specifically with regards to the turnaround time for, for plans review, plans have to come in and be dropped off for review. That's one of the ideas, that one of the problems that we've had is the turnaround time with that. But specifically, we hired, we contracted with a third party, a plans examiner company. We hired two new plans examiners. We, I believe that we do have the staff for that now. The process of issuing permits is simply, depends, it's probably, depending on the permit, is in maybe 30 minutes. We have the number of permit technicians that we need, and then performing the inspections, we have that staff, so.
Now, let me ask you this. When you say you've hired a third-party plan examiner, is that what you, you said, a third-party?
Yes, sir, a, a company that performs third-party plans exam.
Right, so now, as far as time-wise, are you finding that that has now expedited the turnaround?
That has helped us, yes. For example, their turnaround time by, in our contract, is two weeks, and which we've reduced our turnaround time to that point now as well. So, and, and maybe I wasn't clear there. Our, our third party's turnaround time is two weeks, but the plans review that we do as well in-house is also two weeks.
And this, let's go, I know we have a closed session. Do, do we, do we have a survey or that the contractors do to critique or address issues within the process? Is there some type of survey that they conduct or questionnaire that the department issues?
We haven't had one in several years, but I'm sure we can come up with something like that.
I mean, that might be something good so that.
Yes, sir.
They can have some critique.
Are you complete, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, did you have anything additional, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
I think there were some additional slides, perhaps? Were we done with the slides?
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of time, because we have a closed session that we have some issues that we really need to address, can, if there's some other issues council has, can they bring that up on the, on the agenda during the regular meeting if that's okay with council?
I will pose that as, as a consensus to council. There is another, another presentation on the agenda which deals with pavilion management. If there are no, can I see a show of hands from a consensus if we want to move forward with moving toward the closed session? It looks like there's enough for us to postpone these other presentations. Madam City Manager, the pavilion presentation?
Yes.
And also, we've completed the land use and development process, so we will be moving into our closed session with a motion, but before we get there, on behalf of, of, of the City Council, I want to thank you all for the comprehensive proposal that you've presented to us and the work that you've done. Obviously, with the manager and the team, you all have put in a lot of effort and thought into improving the process. I think the recommendations from my colleagues on council were very well indicated, and we look forward to some of those things being added to make it a better experience for our business owners and our citizens. So thank you again for all your hard work.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we read the closed session motion, I just want to, for Attorney Stromberg, the specific issue that you have in the motion, there are also other settlement issues other than just the monument protest. Can, can that language be added and other settlement issues? Would that still be consistent with the code that's referenced?
That, that would be fine. I'm not exactly sure which cases you're talking about, but I.
Well, any cases that we've discussed previously, other than just monument cases.
All right, I, yeah, that'd be fine to amend the motion if it includes other cases.
And other settlement, how's it, in other?
Other litigation.
Other litigation.
Do we need to have that in writing before we move forward?
Yeah, I can put it in.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Dr. Whitaker, sir, could you read the motion?
Okay. I move to go into closed meeting A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city specifically regarding events related to the monument protests and other litigation issues. B pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.3 for the purpose of discussing and disposition of publicly held real estate, real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public bounty specifically regarding 700 Crawford Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes, we're in closed session. Before we start the meeting, we have a motion, we need a motion to come out of closed?
Yes. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
We need a second, second. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.